Our first item of business this evening is the open floor. This is where residents can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to three minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak?
Mark Nystrom, ninety-five sixty-five Park Avenue Northeast. Well, none of this probably matters because we're so deep into this now that it's never going to change. But I'd like to congratulate the city council for getting us on KSTP five segment, your tax dollars. Now, no one will be want to live here or no one will be able to sell their house because taxes will be, nobody wants it. And the fire department, that's a dead issue. Or you want it, so that's just like, why even bother with that? But I would like to know when and how you're going to pay for the second station. People are already up in arms, like, they're never going to get to my house in time. So I guess you'll have to figure that out. Taxes, yeah, nineteen percent last year, probably nineteen percent this year. Commercial businesses, oh, I see there's another corridor going in downtown Atsigo. But, you know, that doesn't pay the bill, so. And I don't know, I asked your planner last year about that and he said, well, it's franchise fees and blah, blah, blah. And we're not close to major highways, so come here, okay, whatever. So, um, and then when the high school is going to be built, and it's going to be built here, I don't know what's going to happen then. So, you know, it will be the highest per capita property tax in the state of Minnesota will be Atsigo. So that's just my opinion, but thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Hediger, nine-five-three-nine, Parkinton Avenue Northeast. Mayor, you remember last year when you guys tried to get into City Hall and the citizens said, no. Forced the fire department on us with no vote from the citizens, no vote at all. You took it upon yourself and the council, other than Ryan, to force the fire department on us. And this is what's raising the taxes. You all should be ashamed of yourselves. You need to stop the fire department and figure out how you're going to pay for it, how the city's going to pay for it. Stop building it, sell the fire trucks to pay for what's built now. We don't need them. Mend relationship between the three cities that did do our fire contracts because they did a good job. I live in the far corner up by the river, a one-on-one. You're building a fire station that's six more miles than Elk River Station one. It's going to take them longer to get to my, my house than Station one. You need to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Other comments?
Chad Brown, one-four-three-four-zero-eight Street. Good to see Tina here today.
Please be respectful. We're during.
Be respectful, I said it's good to see her. I don't understand why you guys couldn't build a smaller fire department and actually have that money out at least two, one on the east, one on the west of Atsigo. The way Atsigo is shaped, it seems like you guys just threw a, threw a dart and said, oh, whatever. I know you guys did a, a, uh, survey and found out what exactly would help, but it, it doesn't make any sense. And these people, you even said when you guys voted, Mayor, you said, well, I don't want anybody's taxes to go up. But yet you do this behind our backs and the people that voted for you should be ashamed. And I hope they learn their lesson.
Thank you.
Melody Bruin, one-seven-six-eight-one-fifty-second Street Northeast. I still appears spoke before about having conversation with our former fire chief. And it would take, per his words, eight minutes and fifty-six seconds to get. That is four seconds under the cap in a perfect world. It's never going to happen. I've since changed my homeowner's insurance to expect a total loss due to these decisions that you guys are making, which costs my family more money along with these taxes. Um, I, I don't understand why we've broken so many relationships to have a fire station that requires us to have a second one. Um, I, I don't know how you guys all didn't see that outside of Ryan. And Ryan, I want to thank you for your due diligence on this. I know you did everything you could. I can hear it in your voice every time you spoke. And for whatever reason, no one else could comprehend what we're getting ourselves into. I also remember standing in the Public Works Building, Mayor Stockham, and speaking with you one-on-one during the open house for the expanded campus. And I asked you questions that were really difficult for you to understand and sorry, not understand, difficult for you to answer because you kept saying that you didn't have your notes in front of you or your book with you. Um, I work for a large retailer who builds like all over the country. So I helped them decide their budgets. That's what I do for a living. And I asked you how you decided that it would be thirty-two million dollars to build the city campus. And you couldn't answer, and you couldn't answer, and I kept asking. And you said to me verbatim, well, we had to pick a number that lost all my faith in any decisions that anyone sitting up there right now makes. You're not listening to Ryan, who is the only voice of reason. And you're causing my family to have to multiple things to be able to stay here and live. And that's really disappointing because we just moved here. And we love the, like, the people that we're meeting and the things that our family is getting to do and having experiences here. But this is making it incredibly difficult for us, those things. So I really hope that you guys can take a hard look in the mirror. All these people behind me and what we're trying to say. This is a terrible decision. How can we pivot? How can we listen to this new interim fire chief with his new suggestions? They're going to be, don't do what you're doing. It's clear to everyone, but specifically the three people right in front of me that are here and the one that's not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Travis Schultz, one-three-five-one-three, eighty-ninth Street. Um, I just was curious as to, I know that the laws or the rules just passed about changing the city dump site stuff. And I was trying to dump my dump trailer, a fourteen-foot standard residential, my own personal trailer. And I was turned away twice saying I couldn't dump my dump trailer because it's commercial. There's no badging, there's no stickers, there's nothing else at all, period, to say that it's commercial. But for some, I dumped my dump trailer for my own little waste, I mean, three-inch sticks, nothing crazy. So maybe we do something about, like, actually educating the person to stand in there so that we can actually give it of our yard waste because I don't know how it makes a difference if I go there four times or I take my trailer there once. I'm not doing it on a regular basis, I'm not commercial, but I couldn't even do it.
Adam Mayor, um, Dan, do you know anything about that with the, the new setup there with Albertville? Mayor, that are out of the city of Mr.
Mayor Council, uh, in coordination with the city of Albertville, we've posted new rules to the compost site to avoid people that don't live in either of the two communities that are using that site unauthorized and driving up costs for the residents of either of these two communities. So there's going to be some growing pains as part of that and we may need to adjust the rule.
I tried talking to the guy and he's called this Fritz guy and he's like, no, it's commercial. There's no badging, I'm a person, I live across the street, I don't have any commercial thing on my truck anywhere, nothing.
Sorry to hear, sorry to hear that. I, I went there last week too and I, kind of caught me off guard, but.
Yeah, I meant the guy's there, but like, I get, I get commercial or not commercial.
Yeah, what was, what was happening is there was a lot of commercial trucks coming in there and dumping large loads, so.
What's where everybody else takes an ID or whatever, I mean, I get that part, you go into another city to take an ID to make sure you're a resident, it's good to go, you know?
Yeah, maybe we can, because I think Albertville, one of their personnel was standing guard there on it. Maybe we can get the word out to them.
Yeah, it's staff from Albertville.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Can you pass this along?
Staff will continue to work with Albertville to make sure we're being flexible on that and not too far one way on this, so.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Good evening. My name is Molly Peterson, nine-nine-two-zero-one-hundred-fifth Street Northeast, Atsigo. I'm learning quickly and slow, slow, I'm in this process, but I'm looking back at an article where the fire department was estimated to cost twenty-one million dollars. And then each year it was expected to cost around one point three with fifteen percent increases year after year. What I have since learned is that with contracting with Albertville, Elk River and Rogers, the annual cost for their services to serve their different categories is closer to one point three billion dollars without the initial overhead. Um, I don't know where things at were EMS, but right now for the majority of our area, Elk River has EMS and it is not taxpayer funded, it's private and doesn't cost the taxpayer any money. And in some of the language around the fire department does say, you know, place for EMS inside of that building. But way beyond all of these things, just the cost of property taxes in addition to all that homeowners are suffering with insurance increase. On top of that, values go up every year. We've had values increase every single year, so the tax basis increases every year, which those tax increases go on. The overall print around operating inside of a budget seemed to go out the window with zero concern for your residency constituency. The median sales price in Atsigo last year was almost four hundred thousand dollars and it's becoming a very unaffordable place to visit. And my hope or request is that there would be more discernment around how money is spent and remaining inside of a budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan Lawlum, uh, one-five-five-five-nine-seventy-seventh Street Northeast. I'm a transplant. Came here from Columbia Heights with my wife, um, three and a half years now. Uh, we chose Atsigo because, uh, we liked school, we liked how small it was. It reminded me of my hometown where I grew up. And I got the feeling that this was a very much a blue collar town. Right? And it just feels like that, you know, one nineteen percent increase, I, I could have absorbed. But now I'm looking at another one, plus another five and a half, plus potential school levies, plus, uh, you know, we all know what's happening in the grocery stores, right? And I'm, even I'm struggling, I'm having to buy, you know, generic milk, generic cheese, generic butter. You can't get more generic than what, what that is, right? And it's just like, there should have been more consideration to your constituents, the people that make up the, the lion's share of what Atsigo is, right? Far as I know, there's not a lot of doctors and lawyers here. This is down south in the W-town is where a lot of those live. So, um, it, it just feels like there should have been more, and I know you can't plan for inflation, I, I, but it just feels like there should have been more planning involved around a budget or whatever, but maybe saying, well, you know, people can absorb a seven percent, not a nineteen, not a twenty, and that's what we're looking at is twenty-five percent. That's huge. Like, I don't, I don't know, I don't think anybody can absorb that unless you are a doctor or lawyer. So it, it's, it's disappointing and, um, we're going to make the best of it. As I know, a lot of people out here are going to do too, but it, it just feels, feels like there should have been more thought for the working people.
Adam Mayor, um, if I might answer, uh, you know, being on council, it's my first year. It's sticker shock to me too, and we'll talk more about it later. But, uh, you know, this, what I'll say now is it's a preliminary budget and we are required by state law to set a ceiling. The final budget will be in December. And between then, we're going to work on, you know, getting that down. But it's a law requirement that we have to, to set a number, but it's not the final. And I can tell you there, there is a lot of planning and different stuff that goes in, into this, so. But I do, I do feel everything you're saying, I have to pay it too. Thank you.
Mike Reese, one-two-zero-nine-six-sixty-eighth Circle Northeast. Um, as a note to the planning, uh, there was a fire study in twenty-seventeen that said we should have a substation with Elk River instead of starting our own department. And that is not, that was never a thing to, uh, I heard go through the process during this whole fires, fire, uh, department forming. Never heard anything about the fire study saying, you know, oh, maybe we should consider this. It was all pumping in headfirst, um, and, uh, you know, now we're stuck with equipment and I'm going to be living farther away from a fire station now, even though you say it's going to be better because we're going to have ten full-time fighters and twenty pay-down call firefighters. But I don't know how that's going to work when you're living farther away from a fire department and it's a big assumption that that's going to be a magic wand every single time for every single, uh, purpose. That's it.
Thank you.
Gerard Zackman, sixty-one ninety-four Oakwood Avenue Northeast, Elk River. You know, it's we the people in Atsigo that are going to have to pay for this whole thing. This city council has not been transparent with any of the, in the city. We are told lie after lie by the former fire chief. Where did he go? He disappeared, he pulled out, stuck us with a bill, and now we got to figure out how to pay. Seventeen or nineteen point three percent increase in taxes, five and a half percent from the county. So I'm just going to round it twenty-five percent off. On a four hundred thousand dollar home, Corey, can you tell me how much that's going to, in taxes? It's going to be a thousand dollars. A thousand dollars on a four hundred. How many people in here are going to be able to keep paying that kind of taxes? You know, when you people took an oath of office, you know, accountability was a big part of it. Lying to people with an oath is a punishable crime by cold perjury. Just stop and think about that for a minute. The Constitution, you must faithfully discharge all of your duties. That includes accountability. Telling the people, explaining to them why, not just letting some fire guy come on give them an empty, a full checkbook, tell them to spin it as fast as you can. We didn't need that fire hall like that, no more than the man in the moon did. We could have, we had a fire study. You guys didn't listen to it. Now you want to spend another hundred hours an hour, up to thirty thousand dollars for another fireman to come in here and tell us what to do with another study. Are you going to listen to him too? Are you going to walk away, say, oh, well, we got this here, we don't care? There's a lot of people out there that are pretty ugly and I don't blame them. And I don't blame anybody that would take one look at Atsigo and say, oh, I don't think I want to go there. Look at their taxes, nineteen point three. I can't believe it. Albertville, seven point one seven, Monticello at eight point six, Elk River at seven point four. Seventeen percent, and they took it down to eight point nine seven in Dayton. Six point seven five for St. Michael, six point five for Ramsey. Six point three five for Maple Grove. Look at how far, uh, Wright County took theirs down. You're almost seven million dollars. Six million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, ninety-four dollars and two cents expenditures on, is a new increase. This city council just approved one point four million to spend in our fire department again just last week. When's this all going to stop? It can't continue. There's, nobody can afford their taxes in this city if you're going to keep spending like you're doing. So I think it's about time that each one of you take a good, hard look at what we're doing up there to the people. And I think it's time to shut it down, let her sit there for a few years. Start saving some money and then maybe open it up again or keep looking for a decent fire chief that knows what the hell he's talking about. The lying to everybody and you guys sucking it up like you did with the last guy. And then he disappeared like he did. He took each one of you guys for a ride. And he took us all for a ride listening to you people and you just let him do it. Angry and come up here, my wife didn't even want me to come to this meeting because I was so upset. But I'm not afraid of it. And I'll say what I want to say because it's we the people that are your bosses. We tell you what to do instead of just going, spending money as fast as you can come up with it. I think you better start taking a hard look at it and really take a deep look and say, hey, this ain't going to work. You knew it from the beginning, you took that fireman's foolishness. He wanted to make Taj Mahal of the world, of at least Minnesota. Because everybody that sees it says, what in the world is Atsigo doing? That's right, a wannabe city, that's what you are.
Thank you.
How you doing, council? Jeff Dahl, sixty-three nineteen Mason Avenue Northeast. Mayor or the city attorney that's online, can anybody? What's, is there a state statute that says there's a maximum a city can charge, the city of Atsigo? For services? For fire services?
Yeah.
Mayor, council, I'm not sure I understand.
So if, so let's say, city of Albertville, let's say if, uh, Atsigo does, let's say, kill their fire station, fire department. Albertville goes, hmm, they just got rid of their A++ credit. We're going to charge you our whole tax levy, we want your four fire trucks, you guys got to pay for rebranding to Albertville. We want your land where the fire department is, we want your land by the white barn. And then we want a contract over five years at fifteen percent. What would stop them? That's just Albertville.
Mayor, every contract the city would enter would have its own terms and conditions and outline the compensation for the services received, so.
So basically they go to, so if I, if they want to do that, let's say they kill it in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. We want eight million for our tax levy, we get your fire trucks, we get your, with the building and that land by the white barn. And we want a five-year deal, fifteen percent a year, take it or leave it. Who's to stop them? Anybody can answer that, even city attorney was online, can you answer that, please? And then more than likely about that, what about Elk River and Rogers? Oh, we'll do it for five million a year too. Twenty-five million dollars a year for fire services? And ours is going to be three point five projected in twenty-seven, fifteen percent, maybe four million in twenty-eight. There's nothing forgetting what they want, nothing. Okay, then you close it down, what about those two fine gentlemen right there? What if Wright County goes, you know, we're tired of that little police station, about eight by eight room there, we had one in that building. What if they go, hmm, remember when we, when I was, they wanted five bucks an hour, one year? Then they get another five bucks an hour, but if they go, we need to keep our deputies, we're going to double their pay, take it or leave it. Who's going to pay for that? You have to vote for that. They don't have to, they don't have to take it at all. So what, I did because you need it. So four billion. Remind them.
Please be respectful.
So when that happens, who's going to pay for that extra for, after four million dollars? Thank you, freedom of speech, baby, God love you. If, if every council member has freedom of speech online, I have freedom of speech here.
Please be respectful to the person at the podium.
So if Albertville does that, which they have half the city, and right now by the time it happens, twenty-eight happens, our city will be worth four billion dollars thanks to Costco. It's at three point eight billion right now.
Be respectful.
So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Bird Zackman, sixty-one, I'm up here a second time. Why don't we give just divide Atsigo up between Elk River, Monticello, Albertville, and let them take care of the whole works and get rid of all yous?
Gabe Davis, six-six-eight-nine, Packer Avenue Northeast. Uh, to your point, when the city, when Atsigo Township was becoming a city, having the different cities annexed parts of Atsigo, that was part of the discussion at that time, it didn't happen. Okay. You guys are going to vote tonight on spending another one point four million dollars on the fire department. Point four last week. You guys wasted a million dollars on your Atsigo Towne Go Hall project. You, that we stopped so we didn't have to have thirty million dollars in bonds. You also wasted a million dollars so we couldn't vote on the fire department. In the current tax levy, you guys are trying to hide, hide the cost of the levy by take, when you took funds and applied it to the levy to bring it down to nineteen point three. You also took fifty thousand dollars from the gambling fund that we get and apply that to it. The city administrator has cut everything he could possibly can from his departments. So there's no place left to take money. We have been lied to about the fire service, we've been lied to about free service, we've been lied to about safety, we've been lied to about response time. Our ex-fire chief, he's took the money and ran, he's totally unaccountable and can't be questioned. This fire department is going to cost us more money next year. There, we are now going to have the highest tax increase of any place in the state of Minnesota. We're going to have the most. There, we are now gonna have the highest tax increase of any place in the state of Minnesota. We're gonna have the most expensive fire department of Minnesota, higher than Minneapolis. What you guys need to is all with the exception of Ryan, you all need to resign for being fiscally irresponsible to us citizens. The other suggestion I have is, like my shirt says, Bohica. Rename our city to Bohi. Bohica stands for bend over here comes again because we're gonna screw you. That's all you guys do is raise taxes, come up with crazy projects, and think us taxpayers are millionaires willing to feed you guys more of our money. On fixed income, we have people that are seniors. We have young families coming in here, and they're getting screwed just as much as we are by you guys.
So what would your suggestion be to do that?
Pardon?
I don't finish.
Yeah. Where are these people coming in here? You make them, I am not getting a nineteen point three percent increase in my fixed income this year or next or the year after. I don't have a printing press. You guys need to resign with the exception of Ryan, the only one that's had any common sense through this whole problem. It's time you listen to the citizens and stop this fire department and rethink the whole thing. I wonder how many people here have lived here six, nine years. Sixty nine years. I'm sorry. I worked forty years for a company and my wife worked forty two. Forty years. You know what's gonna do? Take two years for you guys to take my house away from me. When I built my house, you told me when I could build and what I couldn't build. When I built my garage, you said, you can build. This is all you can build. But in a hall, you have no problem taking my money. You know what my taxes are? Seventy nine hundred and ninety nine dollars on two and a half acres. Explain that. And we're on a fixed income. We're both retired. I've been here all my life. I grew up across the road from where I live. You explain that, and I wanna know which one of you up there and the fire chief is qualified to build that building? Who knows anything about fire halls up there? Who knows about it? I work for Cargill. And you know they don't lose money. When we got bids for jobs, we would sit around and discuss, you know, this is overkill. Why are we doing this? Or we can cut here. You guys just took the top dollar and you went right to the pay for it. And it just pisses me off.
Sir, can we ask, can you come up so we can get your name for the record?
Ryan Merkley, seven, five, five, one, Ogren Avenue Northeast. Just give you a little background. I moved here because I thought it was gonna go, great city to live in. I'm an engineer by trade, and this is my conducted industry. I designed and had to build to be my home. I build it to live in it for the rest of my life. I have zero into my home. Every doorway is thirty six inches. My walls are two by six, so I don't have any breezes. That's the only home I've lived in, in this weather extreme, that doesn't have air moving without anything open. Four years ago, because I saw the writing on the wall with the decisions by the folks that are elected to this city continually raising taxes, and I just wanna ask, we build several hundred homes every year. There's gotta be more taxes collected from that than it's sitting as a property for a farming, doesn't it? Do you collect that difference every year? I'd like to know what the home building uh increase from year to year gives the city for taxation versus what the property did a farm land. And uh, I've already decided, and I knew the writing was on the wall, that the home I want to live in for the rest of my life, I built it to live in it. Everything's on one level. But four years ago, I knew I couldn't stay there. I've already acquired acres in another state where I went with my, with my building for my home to that county building. Had them spec out my home, what it would cost and put on my five acres I bought in that community. It was less than a third four years ago than I pay. And that's why when I retire sooner than I want, because I know I'm gonna be taxed out of my home. I'm leaving the state when I retire because I can't afford the property taxes here in this community that I plan to live in for the rest of my life. So, thank you, but no, thank you.
Thank you.
Cherry Elros, ten thousand eighty four Taylor Avenue Northeast. For years and years, we didn't have our own fire department. They utilized, I believe, four different cities. And all of a sudden, we have to have two fire departments? I don't, I don't understand that. I have talked to a person at the city. And I said, first of all, I would guess that most people in the city don't even know that you ordered four fire trucks. Plus, now they had a fire chief, but there was really nothing for him to supervise. Because as I understand it, the uh fire department isn't gonna be usable until twenty, early twenty twenty six. That may have changed. I don't know. When I asked about what fire departments they were gonna use in the interim. Um, Monticello used to be part of that, and they no longer, and I asked why. He said they're too far away. And I said, not from my house, they're on, they're six point six miles door to door. This new fire hall that's going up is, I believe, fifteen something from my house. Uh, I'm not sure why they hired a fire chief so early. But that's over and done with. And it just this amount of money. And I also asked that same person, I said, how were all the voters or the households in the city notified about this fire department thing? Well, they can come to the meetings or they can go on our website and read the minutes. I said, how about a direct mailing to every household? Well, then we'd be criticized for postage. That's what I was told. That's a terrible reason. We're spending all this money on a fire department and we can't send a letter to every household to tell them what's going on? That has not sat well with me, and I think that was sometime back in last year. But it just seems like the city is just soaking up money from the residents. And I've been tracking the franchise fees that you get. That started several years ago. For our household alone, we have paid approximately some dollars. And Wright Hennepin is stable at four dollars. That's where they started and they still are. Spectrum goes up and up and up. Uh, I don't know why this franchise fee is so different, but back in July of twenty twenty, we paid five ninety nine a month for franchise fee to the city of Otsego for Spectrum alone. In September of twenty three, we were paying seven dollars and six cents on. August five, it's up to eight dollars and fourteen cents. And that's just one household. Multiply that times a thousand households. And if some of you people back here haven't looked at your bills in detail to see if you're paying a franchise fee. And that's just on two weeks. I'm sure there's money coming in to the city from other companies also. Which increase their expenses because now they have to track it and submit it. It's it just doesn't sit well with me. And then I was shocked to find out they're going for a second fire department.
Okay. Thank you.
Adam, can you comment on the spectrum?
Mayor Council, Spectrum uh franchise fee was put in place in the nineteen nineties. Um, percentage is based on five percent of TV services that a customer might have, not on phone or data services. So if your cable portion of your spectrum bill fluctuates month to month, or you uh upgrade to a different package, or maybe above service, or get a promotional deal, you're paying that five percent of whatever your portion is for cable TV.
Okay.
Nancy Anderson, nine, zero, three, one, Mason Avenue Northeast. We have lived in Otsego for forty years. Other than plowing our street, we get nothing from the city. Own sewer, we have our own well. We don't have any children in school, which is of course not Otsego. And our property taxes have gone up and up and up. You built that road uh to access the middle, except Mason Avenue, which is a very low level road, which we had to fix, is now having a steady stream of four and five heavy dumpster trucks, trucks constantly using that road. This, in forty years of living here, is the stupidest thing that has ever happened in Otsego. And I would like to thank Ryan for his last email about the facts that you presented from the person who gave you the information about how difficult it is going to be to get this thing going, to hire people. Other fire departments are begging for staff. This is just, I agree with the people who said, let's just shutter. It's crazy.
Deb Merrill is one, four, six, eight, two, eighty fourth Street Northeast. What are you people doing to prepare for the homeless population that you are creating? What are you doing? What are you doing? Where? I live on eighty fourth street. It's a main drag. They're probably gonna tent in my yard. If I can pay my taxes to stay there. What are you going to do for the homeless population that you are creating? Coming. They are here, and they're in the homes you're taking away now.
McAlpine, one thirty three fifty five eighty fifth street. Just like everybody else up here. I think is a bunch of bullshit. I mean, look at the table, folks. Look around the table. And take a good look at one another and just, what in the hell are you doing? You're supposed to be representing the people of Otsego. We, we sure are not in the hell going on, you people have plans. It's just, it's unbelievable. I can't, I can't figure it out. My father moved in here in nineteen whatever. I moved to Otsego in nineteen forty seven. On the west side of Dayton. It was a part of Otsego then. That's seventy eight years ago. And I've seen a lot of shit come and go. And I've seen a lot of people like you sitting up here when Otsego was a township. They seemed to work with it. They were farmers. They knew how to work and they knew how to work with a company and how to build. But you people ju- just don't seem to have it. In that many years, I mean, after being here for that many years. I cannot believe that you don't get it, what the people want. I actually think that you're under the gun right now. I mean, it, it's almost embarrassing. I mean, you all should just turn around and take a look and see what in God's name you're doing to this city. Cause you're sure thinking of the people of Otsego. There you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got a question for the lawyer. Uh, you know, in the wintertime, you're supposed to keep the snow away from the fire hydrant. Well, I'm Dale Colas. I'm gonna tell you my address. So if there's a fire, they know how to get there. One, one, four, two, five, one, Northeast seventy street. You go outside my yard. And you try to find that fire hydrant. Then you go through the roundabout by Merlin Blaries, and you try to find that fire hydrant there. Because the hydrant is this high, the weeds are this high, and then you got a little red pole sticking out. You tell me how you people are gonna find that in an emergency. That's a bunch of bull. If it should be the same rules, I would think. Don't you have to keep it clear so they can get to it? I don't know. And another thing, I was thinking back there, a new model for the fire department, if it does get built. We've never lost a basement.
You know what this reminds me of? Can't vex him, except for Ryan. The same, you're just like him. Take the money, take the money and piss it away and let, and pay taxes and make the people pay taxes. Why? That's greed. Well, I don't know where you people were brought up, but it sure in the hell, it wasn't the same breed we are. You're just fakeies, I'll tell you. I don't know. Uh, this building back here you just built, how much did that cost you? Don't tell me you didn't know because everyone you on the board. What for? What is it? How much it cost you? A million? Well, don't look at me like I'm dumb. I'm asking you a question.
Ryan, you're in public.
You're talking about the
shed back there where your helpers were scaring the snow.
One point four? Is that a good number?
That's correct.
How much? One point four.
That's, that's nice. You needed that before the fire department? You just piss that money away wherever you can get it, can't you? Pay, put up, cause your guys can't let their trucks warm up because it's cold out. Why don't you go to Sharbers? A bunch of them other places. Their new equipment sits outside. You don't see them putting it all the way. You got a bunch of pansies like that, like my old man told me. You don't wanna do it, get the hell out. But we worked anyway, right through it. And we all made it. But this is, this is a joke. It's greed. And I told, the first night we were here, you had that Wisconsin fire chief, whatever the hell you called him. I took him in the back there and I said, why in the hell don't you give me the keys to the pickup and get your ass out of here? It's trouble. And the Kraus Anderson guy told him the same thing. You got the job. No, we don't. So I called up the city and they said, you got fifteen, no, four days to get a bid in here. I call Rogers, Elk River, Princeton. Five different, they said, what are you talking about? Oh, Otsego, they're putting a fire department in. We can't make a bid in that time of now. And didn't I tell you to go to Zimmerman and look at their fire department? Nine million dollars. You know what Dingo Ball said, your fire chief? That was during COVID, it was cheaper. Now, that's a brain, isn't it? That's a brain. Then the next time I came in arguing with him, I said, you lied to me. I didn't lie to you. I told you the truth. No, you didn't, you son of a, you know what? Yes, I called Elk River, Rogers, and Zimmerman. And there wasn't a one above nine. But here you got, what do you got different? I know what you got. You got a dumb fool come here and tell you what you wanted, and you all said, that's all you can do here. Every time I look at the paper, everything's yes, uh, yes. It's a joke. Don't your dad, mother and dad ever tell you this? It's a joke. Don't your dad, mother and dad ever tell you this? Teach you how to say no? You got this city so goddamn screwed up. It's terrible. And it's just like you, the mess in this city, why don't you go pick that up during the days when you ain't got nothing to do? There's more trash on thirty nine than I ever seen in my life. If I had a match, I'd burn it. We ain't got a fire department to put it out. But why don't you look at some of that? I told you one time before. Get up and on one oh one and drive three quarters of the way to Zep- to what's the next town here? And just look at the shit in the ditches and that. Cars, nine cars, trees dipped over. What are you, what are you gonna do about that? Or you just got a fire department on your mind now? And that fire department, a good thing I could do is forgive my brother, maybe a couple thousand dollars and buy some more goddamn pigs and let them spread right there in front of you. And then we'll see how it go. And then we'll just come back and say, oh, these guys wanted the pigs. Right? God, I can't believe you're that's this low. It's terrible. I didn't mean you either. I know you. Yeah, it's a joke.
Mark, nice on ninety five sixty five Park Avenue. I don't know how you people got elected. But I have one thing, lies, you're liars. Your old police chief was a liar. He stood here and said, oh, they have to come and help us. It's the law. No, it's not the law. But you burned every bridge for this. I'm in the Elk River Fire District over there. My neighbor had a fire in his grill. They had three trucks there in two minutes. Ain't gonna happen with your fire department.
Heather Dirkman, one three zero eight eight eighty third Street. So I guess my question for you guys is, is it, are we beyond the no return? Is there any way that we can postpone this until the city of Atsigo can save money like every other constituent has to when they want to purchase something that they don't have the funds for at the time? And we could dual purpose that building? Go ahead and concrete the, you guys wanted more storage for public works? Use that as a storage building for now until the city can actually afford to not charge the taxes at nineteen point three percent. Is that even feasible? Is that possible? Or are we past the point of no return?
We're not gonna answer you. This is, this is open forum, so we take your comments.
But how are we supposed to learn anything as constituents? Because other than Ryan, nobody, none of you inform us what's going on. We're, I feel like we're in the dark. You guys just you guys just make the rules and we're just supposed to abide and follow with no say. That's not what a democracy is. I, I, I don't understand how you guys feel okay going to bed at night, doing what you're doing to the people in this city.
Any other comments?
Matt Till, one four one eight six sixty second Street. Hi. Y'all were voted in.
Keep closer to the mic. Sorry.
Very hard to or whatever. Y'all grow up here? Any of you? Were any of you born and raised here in Atsigo? Yes or no?
No.
No.
None of ya? Alright. Cause I know a lot, right? Okay. I, last time I seen, it's nineteen thousand nine hundred and sixty six people is the population in Atsigo, right?
Twenty four thousand.
Twenty four, I don't know. I just seen the sign. Twenty four thousand people in Atsigo. Made enough room for what? Less than a hundred people in here? So less than a hundred people even found out that this was even going on. This is even having a conversation. Y'all are making a vote tonight. Right? And out of all the people that found out about it that are are saying, bad idea. Y'all gonna vote? What the people are saying, the people that vote you guys in are saying, or you're just gonna kind of just go? Yeah, whatever. Anyways, so we're gonna spend that money just like these are questions you all can answer. No?
It's open forum, so we let you guys talk.
Oh, so we get to talk, but you don't get to answer? Alright, so we'll just find out like when the vote goes through. So we're just here to talk, just to say what we want to say.
Later on the agenda.
Actual answers.
It's later on the agenda, Matt.
Well, I wait to hear the outcome on this. Cause I, I, I hear everyone in this room saying this is a bad idea. So we'll see what you guys do, right?
Any other comments?
My name's Terry Hall. I know Cory. Hey, Terry. How are you? Um, I live at one five four seven seven Northeast Ninety Third Street. I moved here in nineteen eighty six. In nineteen eighty six, taxes and insurance, seven dollars a month. Now my taxes and insurance are six hundred a month. And you keep raising, what is the percent? You know, they fight in Minneapolis over a five percent and you between you and Wright County, twenty four percent? I mean, come on. Guilty. And every year. Last year you wanted to build a building over here for thirty one million dollars. Ridiculous. I thought we were gonna have some change. You're the bean counter. What's the percentages that we've had over, I would say since two thousand nine? Two thousand nine, housing. All of the property taxes went down. And you all put something in the mail saying, we are not gonna lower the taxes because we got guaranteed expenses. And then, and then when housing again, all you ever did was raise them, raise them, raise them, raise them. In ridiculous amounts. Percentages are unreal. Something has to change.
Thanks, Terry.
Dave Davis, I forgot to ask this one question tonight. On the news, we have the city administrator being interviewed. When they talk tax increases in St. Paul, Minneapolis, their mayor was the one that responded to the news people. What's a, why weren't you the person, the main person since you spearheaded this fire department, answerable to the press?
I wasn't breached. I wasn't. Nobody asked me for a comment.
Well, my understanding is they were directed to call you. I don't know if they made that call, but I certainly was expecting the leader of Atsigo to be responding to the question of, oh, I were having high taxes.
Hi, Tom Conan, thirteen, one oh eight seventieth Street. Um, I have to imagine that we're not uh, making decisions with malicious intent. So it just feels like all this left is either ignorance or incompetence. If you talk to, and you've been hearing what people have to say about what these decisions that you guys have been making over the last month, weeks, years. It's not received well. You talk to a lot of people out in the city. If you were just to knock on doors and say, how do you feel about this? I think you're gonna feel a lot more of this sentiment. Um, frankly, a lot of us vote with our wallets. And this will definitely impact that for sure, if this does go through. Um, and then what kind of tone are we setting for companies that are looking to open businesses here? When we have a nearly twenty percent tax increase, like what incentives are them to even come here if that's what they're being welcomed with? And lastly, when these gigantic conglomerates of house builders are coming in here. I mean, the one that's going over Mackay, whatever the gravel road is, they're paving it so the dump trucks can go on those going to the neighborhoods. Why can't we have them help pay for some of this stuff? Like the builders, like we make them pave the road, do curb and gutter? Like they're the ones that are building what we need the fire services for. Should they not? Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm Brittany Arnold at ninety four ninety seven Parkington Ave Northeast. Um, I would just like to say I'm a young family who moved into Atsigo in twenty eighteen. My hope was to stay here and actually build again in Atsigo with my kids either going to Elk River, Rogers, or hopefully at a high school at some point. Our hope was to build within the next three years. I don't see that possible with this increase in tax. It's gonna make me want to go to a different s- school district around here. Also, I'm in charge of several boards. I make decisions after listening to my board. I do not make a dis- out my board's input. And what you guys have done here is made a decision without your citizens' input. Thirdly, I run or I manage a multimillion dollar budget. And how you guys have been looking at the money is reckless and it is not smart. I would hi- highly, please listen to your citizens like I do with my board members.
Any other comments? Ask one more time, any other comments?
My name's Joel Peterson. I live on eight two five Parkhead Avenue Northeast. I hate doing this shit. I hate most of you. Um, if you think about what you're gonna be charging us, not only for high schools, for uh, community centers, for everything ahead of us. This is what you're gonna drop on us when we can barely afford fucking groceries? This is insane. Like you guys, seriously, and you just sit up there all smug with your fucking faces. You guys are ridiculous. You guys are all fucking ridiculous. Every single one of you guys are ridiculous assholes and fuck off. Fuck you guys.
Any other comments? Alright, we will close the open forum. And we will move it up to the council to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Ryan.
I would like to bring down item three dot three off the consent agenda. Item six dot one.
Alright. Is there any other discussion?
Madam Mayor.
The motion would be in order. Yes, Ryan.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Okay. There's a second.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Cory. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to our consent agenda, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Ryan.
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second. Second, alright. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All the, we're signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item four point one, Kittredge Crossing P U D concept plan. Turn this over to the planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, JP Brooks Builders has submitted a concept plan for uh, proposed development of three outlots within the Kittredge Crossings Development. Uh, that development is located west of County Road nineteen, Lebo Avenue and north of seventieth Street. Uh, the one outlaw has a previous approval for uh, single family detached townhomes consisting of forty six lots. Uh, that builder has pulled out of that development. So JP Brooks is looking to step in and assume completion of that project with some changes. And then also move forward with two additional outlots within the Kittredge Crossings neighborhood that have been developed since the project was approved uh, in two thousand six. This concept plan application is advisory only. The developers seeking input and feedback from the planning commission and city council uh, regarding the acceptability of their proposed development within the neighborhood. Uh, their entitlement to move forward with the project, they would have to come back for additional applications that would include public hearings held at the planning commission uh, with the same notice sent to properties within three hundred and fifty feet. As I said, the properties west of nineteen, north of seventieth Street, the Kittredge Crossings Development. Uh, to the north of the three outlots are townhomes that were built by previous developers within the subdivision. Uh, northwest corner of the area is Kittredge Crossings Park. Uh, and then to the east of the site is undeveloped property that's guided use development. South of seventieth Street is land in Albertville that's guided for future industrial use. Uh, the proposed development of the townhomes would be compatible and consistent with the character of the existing development in the area, which was one of the feedback items that the city received uh, when there was a concept in the northwest parcel previously for an apartment use. There was objection uh, to the intensity of that land use and comment that if anything develops in the area, then it should be similar in nature to what's there today. Um, so what's proposed is approximately two hundred uh, roped and style townhomes. Within the three outlots, they meet all the requirements in terms of lot area and density. Uh, the setbacks are general, generally compliant. We obviously with the concept plan don't dial down and measure exact uh, dimensions, but uh, staff is comfortable that presented here does comply with the subdivision ordinance and zoning ordinance. Access to these three parcels is all provided uh, via existing streets off seventieth Street that were constructed as part of the initial Kittredge Crossings development. In that sense, they were constructed with enough capacity and size to be able to accommodate development of these three properties as well as the other properties uh, within the neighborhood that developed. Access to the subdivision is provided via seventieth Street currently. Uh, there's an outlet of Kittredge Parkway to Kittredge or to um, to the west, and then there'll be future accesses to the north and out to County Road nineteen in the future. Uh, the developer provided two concept plans. They basically differ on the east side of this block. Outlet A, uh, the initial plan is consistent with the approved development that has into access to the townhouses adjacent to it via private drive. Uh, the second would change the uh, layout to eliminate that private drive and provide direct lot access on to Calend Avenue. Uh, city staff doesn't favor that proposal based on Calend Avenue extended out to County Road nineteen. And potential commercial uses basically becoming a connection point between the two arterial roadways. Uh, the planning commission felt similarly uh, with regards to that as well. Uh, the only other issue that the planning commission discussed at length was uh, the transition from the existing twin home that was built by the first developer, Atsigo Finest Homes. And that the single family detached that Central Homes built. Uh, they were concerned about placing these rural townhomes directly adjacent to them without any transition that would result in a major bulkier building next to those smaller units. So that was the feedback from the planning commission that they were left. Uh, they also had comments about the architecture facing uh, Kittredge Parkway. When it was initially designed, those homes were to front Kittredge Parkway. Now this builder's reversing uh, rear loaded, front accessed home. And so they've attempted to dress up the, yeah, the visibility or the building view from Kittredge Parkway. And then we'll let the developer kind of compare and contrast the two. Uh, city staff's recommendation was that the act is consistent with the land uses recommended by the comprehensive plan. Uh, the dwellings fit within the area that they're being proposed and that they're similar type and style to what's there today. Uh, the site plans generally demonstrate the ability to comply with the zoning ordinance. We did have fifteen conditions that we added uh, comments that they would need to address moving forward to a preliminary plant application. Uh, planning commission reviewed this at their meeting on September fifteenth. Uh, so as to ensure there's transparency as part of the development process, we do have that as a public hearing. So that the public has an opportunity to come to this preliminary stage two and make comments. Uh, the main concern was traffic uh, generated by the development, the ability of streets in the area to handle that, which city staff addressed. Um, we did provide the draft minutes of the planning commission meeting for your review and consideration as part of the review of this trust. Uh, but after closing the public hearing, the planning commission voted six to zero to support the concept plan. Again, their primary concerns being transitional dwellings on the west half of Outlet A of fillers of Kittredge Crossings, and then also echoing staff's comment that dwellings shouldn't directly as Cal- uh, Calend Avenue from Outlet A as well. Uh, Mr. Tabone, Paul Tabone is here from, uh, J P Brooks Builders, uh, to address the application before the council as well.
Does a developer wish to comment?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Paul Tabone with J P B Land. Uh, we are the development arm of J P Brooks Builders, one-three-seven-zero-zero, Reimer Drive, Maple Grove, Minnesota. I wanna thank staff for working with us on this concept. And, uh, Dan and Ron have been really helpful pulling together different, um, insights and things as we've gone through the concept plan, and I wanted to just provide a little bit more information um, in a little bit more detail with our proposal this evening. And also just kinda familiarize the council with who we are, what we do, our history in the marketplace. So I'll try to keep it brief. I know there's a, there's a lot on the docket for this evening. So we're a local builder developer based out of Maple Grove. Um, have been around since twenty thirteen. Um, we current nineteen neighborhoods and sixteen jurisdictions throughout the metro. Um, and we've built more than a thousand homes in forty-five different communities since our exit, or since our inception. Our average number of homes is around a hundred and fifty-five annually, and actually this year we're on track to somewhere between one eighty and two hundred, trying to grow year over year as we, um, buy more land and develop and develop more homes to deliver to the housing market. And the mission is simple. We really, we try to build high-quality, well-designed homes that reflect the dreams of our homeowners, and, um, we build multiple areas throughout the metro, trying to expand, like I said. We were, we've, we've been ranked as a top twenty-five home builder, uh, the last five years running, and we're certified, uh, green builder as well, so. Um, staff did a nice job summing up what the present, or what the, uh, what the site plan is. Um, the first one would be two hundred and three townhomes. Uh, ninety-four of those are back-to-back, and then, um, rows are a hundred and nine. And I won't touch too much on the development regulations, cuz we have vetted those with staff, and we're generally in conformance with the setbacks, separation between buildings and those types of things. So the next slide is the second, um, uh, concept that we came up with, hundred and ninety-nine homes. Um, so a difference of four overall. Um, a couple of things that I wanted to highlight on this one, that, that East Hurley Road is gone. We do know that there's some, um, material shortage on the site. Um, we haven't quantified it just yet. There was a comment made last week, I think, at the planning commission that we were doing, we were eliminating the road. Um, purely for, I guess, economic reasons. That's not necessarily the case. It's a portion of it. I mean, no, doesn't consider the cost implications of design. Um, but, uh, something that we wanted to do was maybe open up that, that middle a little bit. And we believe that seven, um, driveways along, uh, along Calend, that would be pretty negligible in terms of what's been planned for the area. I mean, there's town where else. And so if you go back, you just go back one slide, Dan, sorry. Um, we thought that it maybe kinda spaces things out a little bit on that east side, instead of having everything so tight along a private drive. It does save on infrastructure install and ultimately public works maintenance as well. So we'd like to, the ability to maybe explore that. We understand that the commission preferred the other one. But kinda working forward as we're trying to get the site lined up just right and trying to, um, plan for being able to move forward with potential grading issues. Kinda take another look at the stormwater. We may need a little bonding as well. So those are the reasons, some of the reasons behind those. So we can just move through this. So a couple of things, I'm gonna skip the, the comprehensive plan stuff because we've kinda talked through it and staff knows what it is, and you guys are aware of what's in your comp plan. Um, but there were some considerations that we had to, that we had to take into, uh, consideration as we move forward. And that was the municipal utilities, so we did talk about that, talked through that with engineering and what's available in the area. And then wanted to make sure that we were connecting two existing roadways. And then sure that we were designing everything to be as compatible with the neighborhood as possible. And there's some community challenges out there, as we all know. The community is currently at a standstill. The original approvals were granted in two thousand and four. It's kind of been at a lull. And a couple of different developers have tried with success. Um, but the development, the development hasn't been able to move forward due to changes in the market, site constraints, and some of the very development approaches. We believe with an attached product that we can move forward and have some success in the community. And so, um, what we're trying to do is provide that market need for housing at, um, an attainable price point, an attached product that we see a need for in the marketplace. And then probably the biggest factor that we had to work through was that west side. Um, it was designed to be in a rear-loaded product and alley-loaded product. So we took a shot at trying to, or kind of dress up the rears of the townhome buildings. And the two words that kinda stick in my mind a little bit were, um, it was jarring. And the commission wanted more of a front porch feel. So what we tried to do there, if you wanna go to the next slide. Do you want me to go to the comparison that you had? Oh, sure. Yeah, that'd be fine. So the, so the, yeah, yeah, thanks, Dan. So the first rendering that we did, um, we added some trim, we added stone, privacy fences in between the patios on the rear, on the rears of the buildings. And then we took into consideration the mature landscaping. That's also a factor that we wanted the city to, that we wanted to to let you know that we, we understand that it's important with those fir trees along the, the street there. Um, and then based on the feedback from the commission, we kinda went back to the drawing board. And we had an updated rendering prepared, and we added dormers on the top of the roof lines. Um, decorative brackets at the peaks, um, shutters along. And what we actually did is we moved the windows together, and then we were able to add that dormer. So it looks a little bit more like the front of a home. In addition to the improvements that you saw on the rendering to the left, which is the bandboard, um, the stone. And, um, we added, and on the right side, we added the shed roofs with the decorative. And so this is the rear of a townhome. But we've dressed it up to try to look more like the front and get that front porch, that front porch aesthetic that the city wanted to see, and that was so important to the commission. Um, one other thing to note is this is a three-unit building. Previously, I had shown elevations of a four. And so we thought about maybe utilizing the space because you have that first twin home, and then there's a single-family detached home, right? And so the thought was maybe instead of going, you know, four-four, three-four, we could go maybe three-three, four-four, and utilize a little bit of that spacing. So it didn't come across as, as jarring. It's the word that kinda stuck in my head, and it was, it was referenced, and I heard it loud and clear. And we wanted to let you know that, that we're trying to work with the city on that. So that's kinda the gist. Um, that's what we're trying to accomplish here. We believe that that with this product, we can, we'd be able to move. Um, and ultimately, we're trying to bring the cities, kinda bring the city's vision to life, finish out the community that was started long ago. And, um, be successful with the community here in Atsigo, so. With that, I'll stand for any questions. And I would appreciate any feedback this evening as well.
I have a few comments. Okay, if I go first. So Paul, I would agree. I was, um, here at the planning commission and do have concerns with the Kittredge Parkway and the lane. Those people, you know, have like homes. They expected they were getting something very similar to that. And so I can appreciate that you moved it down to three, but it's still to your words and using the jarring, it still seems very jarring to me. If, if I'm living across the street expecting there were going to be single-family homes there, seeing a row of three townhomes isn't what I think those residents expected they were going to be living next to. I also had concerns with Calend. There was a lot of residents that had brought that up about um, traffic and schools to the north, um, when that connects over to nineteen eventually. So I'm not in favor of the second concept, I guess you would call it, where the driveways are coming in on Calend. I think that road um, backs up. We do have to be, school being there, and just all the residents to the north that use it in the other townhomes. One other thing was someone had brought up, um, a possibility of you adding a trail segment to get into the loop for the park if you're on the, um, east development. Had you thought about that or toyed around with that idea?
Are you talking about along Calend there, on the west side of Calend?
Yeah, Calend or having him come in on this private street and then hooking up with the, I guess I'm pointing, Dan, it would be on that north.
Yeah.
Is there a way for them to connect? And I know that the discussion was, what does that look like? Because the, the lady that came in and, um, commented lives to the north in the townhomes that we're not talking about with this development, but just made reference that people are cutting through her yard to get to the park if they're on that east city. So I do think having a way in potentially for residents, since there is that trail there, makes sense, and so I would support that comment.
City staff's recommendation is that there be sidewalks on both sides of Calend, and then there's the existing sidewalk in Seventy-first Street. Uh, a trail connection through the private development creates issues with maintenance as to who's responsible to maintain it, where is it connecting to? So recognizing that, yeah, people are gonna go overland to get to the park. That's just gonna happen, but public access would be intended to be on street sidewalks.
So using Calend and Seventy-first.
Correct.
Um, and council also just, everyone was passed out the correct one. If you're looking online, it was correct in the pack, online, but not in our packets. Any other comments?
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Ryan.
I would just, uh, I think I would echo, uh, everything the mayor said. I think the transition needs to be a little bit more, uh, smooth on the west side, I guess I would say. I, I, I agree that plan or the concept that has the driveway is the one I would go with. I would also say up on the northeast corner, um, of the plan, there's the two driveways that are on Calend that are sort of on the inner radius of that curve. I really don't like that. I think that's, um, that creates some sightline problems. If there's a way to make that an inner, you know, part of that drive way network, I think that's a lot better. It might not be an issue over the next couple of years, but as that road extends, that would be a very dangerous driveway on that inner radius. The outer radius is better because there's better sightlines, but that one, I would say, we gotta do something about that.
You're saying on that northern cul-de-sac?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which I'm assuming that, to follow up with Ryan's thing, that, that will punch through eventually.
Correct.
Someone develops. So even that east one creates a problem too. It's a true right lane, depending on how the curve of the road.
Yep, yeah.
Questions or comments? Corey?
Madam Mayor. Um, just for anybody who knows, I, I kinda wonder what the school traffic is like this year over there on that road. Cuz I, the one question I have is, I guess it would be the by T, then the name of it, but the the road that's parallel to Seventieth, just above it with the driveway. It's coming right out on, onto Calend. The one lower, closer to Seventieth.
The private drive, yes, right there.
Yeah, wonder, well, knowing my daughter used to go to that school and how busy it was, and that was like ten years ago, but I've heard probably really busy now with, with school kids. Does anybody have any insight on that?
Mayor, so that intersection meets spacing guidelines set by the zoning ordinance. Calend Avenue was designed as a commercial industrial street, so it's wider than your typical. It's designed like a residential collector's street, so it's designed to accommodate traffic from the entire development through that. Obviously, there's peak demand, school, uh, is exiting from that area, pickup, drop-off, et cetera. Um, but because the intersection meets spacing requirements and the access onto the street would be controlled at limited points, it will function appropriately.
Go.
But to piggyback off that, is it apparent that those two roads don't line up?
Mayor, that's something we would pick up as part of the preliminary plat review.
Okay.
Yep.
Just think that's gonna be.
To make sure that they do in fact align, yes.
Okay, that was a concern.
And I think we have, uh, I saw in here about the trails. The trail along Seventieth would that eventually go to Kittredge?
Mayor, that's been completed now.
Is it, that is done? Just wasn't here, okay. Then what, what do you know about the H, would it be, I'm assuming?
It would be an HOA.
Yeah.
By law, you have to have one because they're attached. So we would set up an HOA to move forward with the future townhomes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Other comments? With our comments that we made tonight, Dan, how do you want us, since this is just a?
Yeah, Mayor, there is a possible motion included on the request for council action. Um, if you just include at the end of it with the comments of the planning commission and city council noted, that will be sufficient.
Correct.
The minutes will stand. Again, this is informal, it's advisory, so the developer needs to consider this as they prepare their plans for submission.
Does anyone else have any other comments? Otherwise, a motion would be in order for this.
Madam Mayor.
Ryan.
Motion to support the P, the plan for Outlots G and O, Kittredge Crossings and Outlot A. Builders of Kittredge Crossings, subjects to the comments of the planning commission from their meeting on fifteenth of September, twenty twenty-five. And those outlined in the planning report dated third of September, twenty twenty-five, as presented, along with council comments.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item four point two. Still wild zoning map amended, amendment, conditional use permit, and preliminary.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Thomas and Ashley Smith have acquired this thirty-one at the end of Kaler Avenue, uh, south of County Road thirty-nine in the northwest corner of the city. Uh, they're proposing to subdivide it into three lots. That requires the three applications listed on the screen. Uh, rezoning to A-two district, a conditional use permit to allow lots less than acres in area, um, and less than four hundred and fifty feet in width. Uh, and that will provide for the three single-family lots as well as construction and of, uh, Kaler Avenue as a permanent cul-de-sac. Uh, so this is located, uh, northwest corner of the city, south of County Road there, east of Cadler Avenue. Uh, it's in urban service expansion area W-two, uh, which is likely to be twenty years plus away from receiving sewer. Uh, so what the comprehensive plan says is that development density should be allowed at one unit for every ten acres of allowing up to three lots to be subdivided from this, uh, site. The property currently is zoned A-one district. Uh, in order to allow development at one unit per ten acres, you have to rezone to the A-two district. Uh, surrounding uses included, include rural residential acreage lots to the north. Added fields to the east, southeast, and the Riverwood National Golf Course to the west. The plat itself provides for dedication of right-of-way, uh, to extend Kaler Avenue from its current, current terminus, uh, where there's a substandard cul-de-sac, uh, that'll extend the road, provide a adequately designed, uh, cul-de-sac turnaround uh, for service, emergency vehicles, as well as residents. Um, there's also, uh, this roadway would be, continue to be gravel, uh, with, like the existing segment to the north. The city may look to pave it, but at this point, we're satisfied that we're acquiring the necessary cul-de-sac to allow for adequate access and turnaround. Lot requirements, all the lots are greater than one acre. Again, the intent of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance and limiting lots less than twenty is to ensure that, uh, once sewer and water is available here, that properties can be resubdivided with those utilities. Uh, there are exceptions to allow for lots between two and a half acres to ten acres if there's topography, wetlands, or other conditions. Uh, if the topography of the existing site, the extensive wetlands, it's pretty difficult to create two and a half acre lots out of this property. Uh, the depth of the lots on either side of Calend Avenue to the north also dictate the depth of the lots resulting within the subdivision, so, uh, two lots on the north side of the property are between two and a half and ten acres in area. Uh, lot three is over twenty acres in area and can stand alone as a permitted lot within, consistent with lot setback requirements, or lot, minimum lot requirements. Uh, each lot has adequate to provide for a home site in compliance with setback requirements. Uh, they will provide stormwater bonding for the, uh, roadway extension as well as any runoff from the home sites. Wetlands within the plat will be overlaid by drainage and utility easements to be protected uh, from intrusion. Utilities will be onsite septic and wells. Uh, and then the plat shows all necessary drainage and utility easements for, uh, perimeter usage as well. Uh, the developers required to pay park dedication as a condition of final plat approval, as the city's not seeking land from this property. Uh, one thing to note with regards to lot three is on the preliminary plat, they did illustrate, uh, the ability to extend Kaler Avenue all the way to the south plat line, as well as the local streets being extended to. As well as the local streets being extended to the east, uh, those are illustrative only indicating how street extended in the future of sewer and water are available. Uh, that decision to extend those streets would be entirely up to the owner of lot three, uh, when utilities are available if they sought to subdivide. So it's just demonstrating the ability, uh, to provide for extension of streets and utilities in the future, uh, consistent with the comprehensive plan. City staff is recommending approval of the application based on consistency with the comprehensive plan and compliance with the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. The planning commission considered the application at their meeting on September fifteenth, uh, the draft meeting minutes are. A couple comments from, uh, property owners to the north, uh, nothing significant that would impact the development of the site. Uh, and after closing the public hearing, the planning commission voted six to zero to recommend approval, uh, with that recommendation subject to nine conditions. As represented in the fact and decision, uh, included in your council packet.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant wish to comment?
Mayor, I don't know that I see.
Okay. All right, questions from council and reminder, you've gotten a new one with updated drawings.
Yep.
The one on mine is correct. Questions for staff? Otherwise, a motion for this item.
Madam Mayor.
Right.
A motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero seven amending the zoning map and approve a conditional use permit and preliminary plat for still wild. Subject to the conditions stated on the findings of fact and decision as presented.
Second. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item five point one, our preliminary property tax levy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, as soon as I get my technology going here. Okay, uh, tonight council is being asked to consider adopting a preliminary levy. Uh, there's also a resolution in there to adjust, uh, debt service levies from what they were originally adopted when those debt issues, uh, were issued. Um, then the last item would be to set the truth and taxation, uh, hearing tonight, so. Uh, slides were included in the packet and in the online version, uh, of the agenda materials, so. Preliminary levy is the estimated amount of money the city plans to collect to fund budgeted expenditures that are not covered by other funding sources. Uh, this amount is used for truth and taxation notices. Those will go out to residents and property owners in the community and are sent out by Wright County. Uh, county and school district taxes are also included on that notice, so there is a number. Uh, there are three different taxing authorities, uh, as part of that TNT notice. Uh, again, the final levy can be less, but it cannot be more than what the council would consider adopting at this stage. Budget and levy meetings thus far, uh, council, uh, what's, it is representative of the discussion held on September eighth. Uh, councils had about eight to ten hours approximately of budget and tax levy review meetings up until this point. Uh, once we get to the end, we'll outline what the remaining budget process looks like, but here's a visual on that timeline. The preliminary levy, uh, pie chart on the left showing the proportional pieces, all the different parts of the levy. Uh, break it out into four different pieces. The general fund covers day-to-day operations. Uh, tax abatement, debt service, and capital projects, I'll explain in the next few slides. Uh, the chart on the right just shows comparison increases from twenty five current year to twenty six preliminary levy. Uh, general fund again covers most day-to-day operations other than water, uh, and utilities. Uh, the preliminary levy is seven million, five hundred and eighty one thousand, an increase of five hundred and eighty one thousand. Uh, some of the major factors in this budget that are driving the levy increase, uh, twenty twenty six is an election year, so there is a cost to host the elections there at seventy six. Contracts for law enforcement and fire protection, uh, also increased from twenty five to proposed twenty six. At about three hundred and ten to twenty thousand dollars on those two contracts. And then, uh, we do have staff positions for, uh, information technology, human resource, and, uh, phase staffing. Hiring for the backend of twenty twenty six as the fire department, uh, would potentially begin operations. Uh, tax abatement levy of one hundred and eight, six hundred and twenty four, this is an increase of twenty one thousand over the current year. Uh, so the city invested approximately nine hundred and fifty thousand in public infrastructure. Uh, and we did partner with the, uh, county, Wright County did partner, and they are reimbursing the city four hundred thousand. Uh, of that nine fifty, so city is essentially repaying itself for infrastructure investment, uh, and that should be done in twenty twenty eight. Debt service, uh, preliminary levy of one million, six hundred and thirty one thousand, this is an one million, three hundred and forty one thousand. Projects financed through the three bond issues that the city has outstanding would be fire and emergency service facility. Uh, twenty eighteen road improvements, uh, done for different neighborhood projects and also for Candler Avenue. And then seven road improvements for reconstruction of county state at head with forty two. And also, uh, Queens Avenue construction east of highway one oh one. The last, uh, grouping of levies is for the capital improvement plan, so. The preliminary levy of one million, eight hundred and eighty four thousand, this is actually a decrease of a hundred and thirty thousand. Uh, the investments that, uh, these levies go towards would be for parks and trails, uh, maintenance and construction of city streets. Vehicles and equipment, buildings and property maintenance, uh, in those categories. Tax capacity, uh, this will come into play here in a, a few slides, but the market value of any property within the city. Is multiplied by class rate that is set to the state legislature, uh, which determines tax capacity of an individual property. Uh, some of the comments during the open forum, we're talking about, you know, as the city grows, why is there not more revenue? Uh, the, the revenue that comes in with the tax levy is set at a certain point in time, that's in. And that's the same amount that the city will receive in taxes whether there's zero new homes built or if there's three hundred new homes built. So the, the city council sets that levy amount in December. That does not fluctuate with building, uh, activity throughout the year. Tax capacity is what comes with, uh, in the city. So the proposed preliminary tax levy is eleven million, two hundred and six thousand, one hundred and thirty eight dollars. Divided by that total tax base of the city at just over forty, uh, gets us to a tax rate of twenty seven point seven eight. Uh, illustration here to show where the city of Otsego is currently. Uh, on the left side of the chart, the salmon color is our twenty twenty five tax rate. Uh, the green color, uh, third, uh, from the left, what the preliminary tax rate is for twenty twenty six. This is still, uh, will fluctuate with final values from the state and county assessor's office. Uh, but does give you a visual as far as where the city's tax rate proposed in twenty six is compared with the balance of, uh, Wright County.
And then those numbers are based on twenty five for those others.
Any, any of the blue bars, Mayor, are twenty twenty five. I, I don't have proposed tax rates for the other communities. Finally, a calculation based on in value home within the city of Otsego, so very bottom line, you see about a hundred and seventy eight dollars. So median value home increased, uh, in twenty twenty six from three hundred and eighty six thousand to four hundred and two. This is obviously an example. There are homes above this dollar amount. There are properties that are below this dollar amount. This is the median. Uh, so again, a hundred and seventy eight dollars would be, uh, the increase for the city taxes only on a four hundred and two thousand dollar property. Looking forward, uh, we'll have additional meetings on capital improvement plan, uh, more focused on the expenditure side of those equations. Uh, the utility fund budgets, uh, what the fee schedule is for twenty twenty six. Uh, we'll host a truth and taxation meeting and final budget and levy adoption, uh, sometime end of the year. Council, I can answer any questions, uh, review any materials in your packet, but again, there are two resolutions for you to consider. And also setting the date of the truth and taxation meeting.
Questions from the council? Adam's presentation. Adam, can you go more into, um. For, you know, picking like a, say a four hundred thousand dollar, hundred thousand dollar. What the tax increase would be per, I don't know, one, your month or year or whatever.
Mayor, I, I have the median value, uh, calculated within the slides. I, I don't have examples of what. Any variety of other values would be, so then a home is above the median value. You could see an impact greater than the one hundred and seventy eight dollars per year. If there's a property below that threshold, um. Percentage wise, it's going to vary. It can vary widely if a home increases value by fifty percent. Or whatever number is, that's going to swing that thing wildly as well, so. Whereas if you had a home that stayed the same value from the current year to the next year, that's where you would see that nineteen point three percent.
Adam, can you also discuss, um, like tonight, this is our. We're setting the preliminary, but we cannot go up. Can you expand that to the residents? Cause we maybe never understand that.
Yeah, Mayor, so statutorily, the preliminary levy is the highest point that the tax levy can be. So the city council over the next three months has, uh, numerous budget meetings, uh, that will be hosting, uh, to attempt to bring that number down, uh, to some. Uh, in line with what the council is, is hoping that final number will be, but, uh, certainly the levy cannot go higher than what the council would adopt this evening.
Right.
Madam Mayor, Adam, I was wondering if you can show, you know, um, on the estimated taxes calculation. Kind of what Tina was after, I think, um, like we're showing the nineteen point four two. Just for the heck of it to show, like, if it was seventeen percent, what the change would be to the median home value.
This, this isn't a live active worksheet. I can't plug in numbers and make changes to what, what that would be. Once, once a property gets over five hundred and seventeen thousand, the homestead market value exclusion would be completely. So.
Right.
Right here in the center of the screen, you still see the, uh, properties in this value range are, uh, receiving a reduction. Based on the homestead market value exclusion. So their taxable market value is different than what the, um, appraised value is of a pro. Taking into effect the class rate, again, this is set by the, the Minnesota State Legislature, properties over five hundred thousand. Uh, there is an additional point two five percent applied to, uh, that value for tax capacity purpose. Um, once you have capacity, you multiply that by the city's tax rate. The city's tax rate is essentially the, the amount of the levy di- divided into the tax base as a whole, so we. City is proposing to tax about twenty seven percent of the entire tax base and spread that out over.
That was the slide that.
Yeah.
Correct.
And just, uh. To kind of go over it again, you know, this is the city's side of it, you know, we have the three tax authorities. Um, be kind of nice to have a. Pull up one of the Wright County properties, just look at how that plays out, so maybe people could. If, if they don't understand, you know, look at a Wright County property tax statement.
Like visually what they look like?
Yeah, and just how, how this plays into it.
You'll have to bear with me, this might take me a few nights, I was not prepared for that, so.
What's your underscore? I ain't gonna use me. Uh, seven nine five, Palm Green Avenue.
That's what you were hoping to see?
Yeah, just so maybe, can, can you kind of explain that in the box, I guess, six through twelve, what that kind of? How that works?
So this is the tax statement, this would not. Generally, the truth and taxation statement is going to look very similar. It is laid out slightly different. Um, and it is, again, estimated taxes because those are sent out before the councils adopt their final budgets. Uh, property value information will typically be in the upper right-hand corner comparing current to a previous, uh, or current to a feature year. Uh, and then down below, there are different components, so, uh, the county portion, uh, would be here. Uh, the city of Otsego portion would be there. School district is broken into two amounts based on the type of levy. Uh, that were adopted as part of those referendums. Uh, and then if there's actual taxing districts, uh, we don't have. Any of those within our community, um, at this time, but there might be a, a lake improvement district. If you have lakefront property, that is something that would potentially show up there. Economic Development Authority tax levies would show up there. Uh, so again, visuals showing the different components and the different taxing authority.
Thank you. So and, and so this preliminary levy is just. It's, it's just showing just the cities. It wouldn't be affecting the counties or the, the school districts.
What, what you as the city council are doing affects the city property tax line item. What the county board or the school district board does would impact their respective line items on that statement.
Correct. Thanks, Adam.
All right, other comments this evening? Um, to your, to your, um, screen, Adam, on page eleven, I do also have some other tax rates and these were on twenty twenty, cause. I thought they were important. They are neighbors too. Um, tax rates, Elk River are thirty nine point five two, Rogers was thirty eight point six or seven, six, seven. Ramsey forty six point zero three two, Anoka forty one, seven, five. And those are the tax rates, not, you know, comparable to ours, which was twenty four point three two, purples of twenty seven. Um, there was a resident tonight that, um, had numbers that they were talking about with other cities with preliminary. Uh, one number that they didn't include is, is Rogers, for example, and they have a fourteen point six preliminary budget that they're proposing also. Um, you know, when you look at their community, it's the same as Otsego, we're growing. We have things that. To tackle as the city grows here too, so, um. We're, we're in a hard spot and we respect that. We're all taxpayers up here too. These are my comments for right now. Does anyone else have any comments?
Madam Mayor, I would echo that too, you know, being a growing city. You know, we're averaging twelve hundred people, um, every year or the last five years, you're gonna need more infrastructure, you're gonna need staff. Um. You know, to offer more city services, so I think any growing city is, is, is going to. Have to increase to some extent your budget each year.
Comments were made about inflation. I mean, that's, that's affecting us also, goods that we buy at the city. So we're, we're impacted by that also. All right, other questions or comments? We have some items first here. And they could be done, they should be done separate since they are. There's three of them and need to pick on the third one when we're having our proof and taxation. Mayor, I'll make the first motion. Or do you want me to make all of them, Adam?
Mayor, I think individually would be the best course of action.
Okay. So, motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash four six, adjusting the twenty twenty-six debt service property certified in the original bond resolution. Is there a second? I will second that. Motion by Tina, seconded by Jessica. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor. Every dollar of this year's property tax increase comes from one decision. Starting our own fire department. That's not an opinion, that's fact. Our debt payments jumped four hundred and sixty-two percent to pay for the fire station lease. Nearly every penny of our debt increase belongs in the fire department column. Almost three quarters of the jump in our general fund is the same story. We had to add new IT staff and HR staff only because the fire department increased our workforce by thirty percent. Those weren't planned for years, but now they're needed just to keep up with the new workload. We knew the sheriff's contract was going up. They told us two years ago. Acting like we need emergency funds to cover that expense is dishonest. We can't point fingers at the county or the cities did this. We burned the bridges with our fire service providers by trying to bully them into free service. It backfired. A thirty percent contract increase isn't them taking advantage of us. It's the cost of our own reckless decisions. We promised that firefighter pay would be in other cities. Instead, our plan pays double. That forced Albertville to raise their pay just to retain staff, which in turn raised our fee. We basically bid against ourselves and lost. Now, Atsigo taxpayers have to foot the bill for our game of chicken. The League of Minnesota Cities says a balanced budget means revenues cover expenses with reserves for the unexpected. But these costs were not unexpected. They were predictable. We've maxed out the credit card and now we're digging in the couch cushions to hide the bill from the taxpayers. Using one-time money to paper over permanent costs isn't balancing the budget. It's driving us straight towards a fiscal cliff. For those who thought a city-owned fire would be cheaper, look at this tax bill and expect another one next year. Without rating reserves, the increase should have been twenty-two percent. That's the real price tag. And for what? The fire study told us that this plan gave us the poorest per- Residents are going from seven stations down to one. Slower response times, lower quality of service, higher taxes. But hey, at least we get our logo on the side of the truck. Other city departments made cuts to try to soften the blow. I appreciate, but it only proves two things. One, without the fire department, property taxes would have gone down this year. And number two, we can't afford this. This increase is unjustifiable. I will not support it.
Right.
Madam Mayor, um, just a couple of comments on that. Adam, um, with our I F and HR hires or our plan for it. Is that accurate, what Councilmember Dunlap was saying that it's originating from the fire station?
Mayor, with any position, there's certainly crossover between departments. In my personal opinion, would I say that those positions are driven solely by the fact of a fire department? No. Uh, are there factors of the fire department that would impact those departments within the city, having an additional facility? Having additional IT equipment, having additional vehicles uh certainly is something that is supported by these positions that have been requested.
Thank you. Um, secondly, um, has the average increase overall to um fire services with our three cities who've been great? Has that been fifteen percent increases by each contract?
Mayor, council, I, I don't have those percentages off, offhand. There's been an increasing trend. As budgets and growth within our own community drive factors of those contracts, whether that's call volume or tax capacity or inflation or them uh increasing their own budgets to provide the level of service for their community and our community. Those are all factors in those inflators. But yes, they are on an upward trend uh over the past handful of years.
Thank you. So I guess I can, I can appreciate some of what you're saying, Ryan. But I think what the problem is, you know, we were dedicated to having these fire service contracts we have for years and our providers have been great. But they all have their own budgets and residents needs that they have to support first. And without having a fire station or some plan here, it leaves Atsigo at risk because we're tied to these short-term contracts, which all of Atsigo residents pay for. And we have no control over the dollar amount. And so I don't think this budget, the fire station, I think it's trying to to stabilize, you know, our budgets over the next few years.
Any more discussion?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I think I would just respond to that by saying, we have no control over what the budget is today. The fire department costs have escalated far beyond, I think, what anyone had anticipated. So the idea that we have control over it? No, not true.
We have a motion from Tina, seconded from Jessica. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Who did you? Adam, comments on it?
Mayor, council, you need to adopt preliminary levy. You need to advise me on what you need to adopt. Would like to schedule an additional meeting to do that.
This has to be by September thirty. Yeah.
I guess I would, you know, when I first saw the numbers, I'm like everybody else, sticker shock, you know, I ain't made of money. I thought, I saw twenty-two percent and I thought, you know, this is kind of a communication tool. I think the prelim- preliminary um levy amount, talking to people. And I thought this is not gonna send a good message, but I mean, at the same time, we are a city. Um, I would be more comfortable starting from, let's say, fifteen percent and working our ways down.
And what would you're to a worksheet that we looked at?
Yeah.
Last time?
Yeah.
We also had, that's taking, when, when we were at our last meeting, Adam asked us all for input and we all said that there, we were open to those numbers, but feel as though starting at that, when taking away funds from the beginning that are in our capital accounts made sense until we worked through each of those details. Adam, can you pull up that page? I can't hear that, I'm sorry.
Don't have it ready, Mayor, so that's gonna take a little while.
Sure.
Madam Mayor, I can probably save discussion because there is quite literally nothing we can do. Uh, the debt service levy includes one point three million dollars for the fire station. Unless council members are willing to say, we're not making that payment, there is quite literally nothing we can do.
Well, there would be use of one-time fees, but again, your, so your, your proposal was, is to not make the payment and ruin the city's credit rating for years to come for all borrowing for any projects we have to do.
Right now, in front of me was to approve the debt service levy and I said no.
Yeah, the point of clarity, the, the motion was for resolution twenty twenty-five forty-six, which was adjusting the debt service property tax levy. Binder twenty twenty-five dash forty-six is adjusting the debt service levy from what was originally sent to Wright County as part of that bond issuance. If we were to follow that, the city would be levying four hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, as shown on the screen. What's being proposed is with the preliminary levy for those two bond issues is two hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred and fourteen. The fire station piece is not here. That's included in the levy. It's just not part of this resol- So essentially you're reducing the levy from twenty twenty A from three hundred and seven thousand down to one hundred and eighty-six thousand. So this is not adopting the preliminary levy. This is a procedural thing. Saying that you are levying less than what was originally planned for you. This was not something that was controversial as part of any previous budget meetings to reduce the levy to what's being shown here. There is a separate resolution in the packet to set the preliminary levy twenty twenty-five dash forty-seven.
But where does the one point three come from? Is that straight tax levy then?
Yes, all of this is tax levy.
Yeah, but you're not adjusting, you don't have, since it's gone through the EDA, you don't have to adjust the, the debt service levy with the county for twenty twenty-four.
You're, you're not also adjusting it because you're levying what was originally proposed to be levy.
Right.
This is done to show that you're changing it from three hundred and seven thousand down to one hundred and eighty-six thousand.
Got it.
Does everyone understand that?
Be, yeah, maybe that.
So motion failed previously for item B of five point one. Can I answer any additional questions on this particular item?
Any questions? Or Corey on this one?
Kind of misunderstood, but um, so this is twenty twenty-five forty-six?
Yes, right.
Yeah, okay.
This one.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt solution twenty twenty-five forty-six, adjusting the two thousand twenty-six debt service property tax levy certified in the original bond resolution.
Point of order, this motion fails. We can't reintroduce it.
Like, Adam.
Is Dave on here?
Mayor, the motion, I think, well, first of all, I think Corey indicated, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry, I think Corey indicated that uh he, he misunderstood the previous motion, but more to the point, uh, the, the prevailing side can renew the motion and Corey was actually, I mean, there was no prevailing side, but uh I think this motion can be uh brought again.
Okay, we have a motion by Corey, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? And again, this is bright, I'm twenty twenty-five dash forty-six, lowering levy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Okay, next item would be in our pack twenty twenty-five dash forty-seven. Comments on this?
Mayor, as included in the packet, here is resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-seven outlining the levy of eleven million, two hundred thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Showing all the different components, including general fund revenue, tax abatement, three bond issues, capital improvement levies and use of fund balances.
Mayor, I guess this is where my comments would have been more appropriate. I, I guess I would like to see if there's interest in lowering from nineteen three.
Madam Mayor, I'd be interested in getting it down to zero, but in order to do that, we'd have to say no to the fire department.
What other cuts would you recommend, Corey, here? When we went through the budget, we have one-time fees or we delay hiring? That was options?
Um, possibly transfer of funds.
Taking it from?
From, I don't have them in front of me, but we talked about them from different.
And to get original, we did take, uh, we did already transfer money. We're talking about covering that.
Correct. Mayor, council, you had those discussions at the September eighth meeting. Uh, staff prepared this resolution based on the conclusion that at least the majority of the council members, um. I can pull up that material. Um, again, this is the preliminary levy. This is not the final levy. You have all of the ability in the world to reduce it from eleven million, two oh six, the number you feel is most appropriate and represents the budget that you need to fund in twenty twenty-six by that final levy adoption.
Also, comments? I would agree, I'm not set on, I mean, I'm tonight is not my end-all, be-all with that number. We have a lot of work to do and that's our job in the next few months before to be looking at where those funds can come from and what we can take and what we can borrow. But we also need to be aware that by borrowing ahead, we are setting ourselves up for the next year too. We need to be aware of that. Talked about moving three of the funds. It was money that potentially could be, some of those funds are renewable, so it's not just one-time fee transfers. The gambling money.
Right.
There was, we also took the overage of the forty-five percent and transferred that out, which is additional fees that we've collected. And we did then talk about the other fund, which was our loan fund, basically, for businesses that touched. But the other sources, if we do take from that, we need to be aware of what other funds and what other projects the city has coming up. Cause if we use all of our money in our reserves and the county gives us with projects, we owe a portion of those. Where does, where is that funded from?
And Mayor, I would just say it's worse than that because if we try to raid even more than we already have, try to raid our other funds, that money won't be there next year. That, that is a fiscal cliff. Our objective is to get to a balanced budget. And even taking the two hundred and twenty-one fifty-two that we're using to try to get this down is a bad idea. It's dishonest. I don't like the fact that we've done that. Now, try and even do more of it, we're just setting ourselves up for failure next year.
Mayor, council, the, the two hundred and twenty thousand is sourced from lawful gambling funds, which Minnesota statute outlines how cities that collect those fees can be used. The tenet behind that is to offset law enforcement contracts, which is a viable use in statute. So dishonest. No, is it past practice? No either. Uh, the other is local funds within the general fund. So we have a fund balance policy that's of any given year. We try to have a fund balance of forty-five percent of the following year's budget. Why forty-five percent? The city gets tax settlements twice a year. So we are essentially saying, we, we want to have in re- So we are essentially saying we, we want to have in reserves within our general fund, the ability to operate for six months. Until we get our next tax settlement in order to operate for the next six months. So if there's amounts in excess of that, the council has the discretion to use that as. One-time monies to reduce the budget or pay for other expenditures. In this case, they are applying it towards the tax levy to reduce the impact. That's the two hundred and twenty thousand. More information on those two items.
Madam Mayor, I would just say that the reason that I think it's not honest to use gambling funds. To try to reduce the levies because we're, we have no specific purpose for it. We saw the levy, said twenty-two percent is will freak out. Where can we pull money from? Uh, how about this fund? Gambling fund, fifty thousand dollars? Okay, that'll help. That's not a specific purpose. Uh, all that is doing is saying. We know this is gonna be too expensive. We gotta figure out a way to make it look not as bad as it is.
Isn't our job as council members to be going through every line item and all the budgets, which is what we did?
We should have done that last year, yes.
And we're continuing to do it. We still have a few months before we have to set the final. Levy and it's our job to con- evaluate. What accounts could help lower this for our residents? We are a growing community. We. Again. We have all of these needs in our community that we need to figure out how to find and find the balance to it. We can kick a can down the road. And. And end up where?
Taking money from these other funds to try to offset the levy is quite literally kicking the can down the road because next year. The, the levy will be even higher and we won't have any funds to try and offset it. Next year will be even.
And I'm talking about. Being responsible with public safety, with projects we have in our city. That's part of being in a city, Ryan. So. Alright. Discussions, thank you Adam for covering.
Thank you, Adam.
We are faced with um, decision here. Again, we. Have a few months to figure out and to lower this. This is setting the maximum to grow out to residence. Does not mean that this is the end of it. Or you have proposals or?
Um. I'm not hearing much movement, I guess, but uh. I guess since it's out there, I'm gonna make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five forty-seven, adopting preliminary property tax levy for taxes payable in twenty twenty-six.
Second. Motion by Corey, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, our next item, I.
Mayor. I want additional piece on this item. Get back to my memo here. You do, uh, do need to provide notice to Wright County as to when the truth and taxation meeting will be so that they can include that on the notice that gets mailed out, so. It cannot occur before November twenty-fifth. It cannot occur after December twenty-ninth. Uh, the meeting cannot start before six P M. Uh, so those are essentially the guidelines you have to work with. Uh, typically the last meeting of the year would be. Uh, Tuesday of December. This year that falls on December eighth, twenty twenty-five. Staff proposed either December first or second uh, for scheduling that meeting at your discretion.
Council. What evening?
I'm uh, I'm pretty flexible. Whatever works for you guys.
Do we know? Damn, there be a plan?
Mayor, we don't know if we have agenda items.
Okay.
We can adjust the schedule accordingly. Uh, it'd be unlikely that we think significant rate from December first, December eighth anyway. Um, so anything would be held up until the first council meeting in January, so. If the council prefers that night, we can just cancel the planning commission.
I'd also, I mean, I'm open to Tuesday too. I think if you have people that are interested in coming. Either one.
Let's do Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Second.
Yep.
Uh, if I can get a motion for that too, just for the record.
Uh, I will make a motion to host the truth and taxation on Tuesday, December second. Starting at six, does six P M work for everyone?
Yep.
At six P M. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Tina. For December second, six P M. Here in the council chambers. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to city council reports and updates. Item. First item heritage preservation. Oh, no, we'll get to you Ryan under six point one, sorry.
Ryan, first.
No, we'll do this first.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. Last O H P C meeting, um, they were preparing for the festival. I heard it went really well. Further updates.
Okay. Um, park and rec commission, Michelle is not here, but.
Guess I, we were there.
Three of us were, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, three of us were, but Corey, you are the liaison.
Yeah, so we uh, I guess Regrand opened the uh. Car, it's a beautiful park, one of our best, I think. Uh, they did a wonderful job. So.
Perfect. Planning Commission, Ryan.
Uh, Madam Mayor, the planning commission reviewed uh, two of the items that we approved tonight, uh, the Kittredge crossings and Stillwell. We still have uh, Queens Avenue industrial um. Application that will come to a future council meeting.
Next is public safety. Tina, you were not there. Um, we discussed the upcoming fest. That was kind of a theme for all those meetings. Um. We also discussed um, they, Michael Scott, so they had asked a few questions about that and then. Uh, Wright County gave updates. Um, they are due planning to do the cleanup before the next meeting. And then close their regular. Okay. Moving on to item six point one, Ryan, who has hold that item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I pulled this down just so there could be a separate vote. I oppose this action because our city is able to receive excellent service from our existing contract providers at a price point that is cost efficient taxpayer. Uh, if approved, this action would bring the total spent to date for our fire department. To seven million, seven hundred thirteen thousand thirty-two dollars and seventy-one cents, which is over five and a half times the cost of the contracts. The amount being considered tonight would cover an entire year of service from our contract providers.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve pay application number nine in the amount of one million four hundred thirty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents for work completed on the fire and emergency services facility project.
Second. Corey, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Moving on to item or, we're starting to city council reports and updates. Does anyone have anything? Um, I would just like to give a huge shout out to all of the staff. Putting the park back together, anybody that helped with the bus stop was. And. Um, lots of positive feedback and to piggyback on Corey's thing, care signing is a beautiful. Uh, Regrand opening area uh, with the pavilion and. You can go kayaking down the river, so please go check it out. Anyone else have anything? Moving on to staff report tonight. Updates, item seven point one.
Mayor, council, more meeting requests here. Uh, five thirty P M would be the requested start time for both, uh, October thirteenth, South. Uh, water treatment plant project. Uh, we'd have the A two S representatives uh. Discussing uh, different components of that project and then the twenty-seventh would be budget review for water, sanitary sewer and stormwater utility funds. Against quest five thirty start times for both.
So the, do you want two separate motions? Audra, yes, she would like two separate. Does five thirty work for everybody?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, I will make a motion to schedule a special city council meeting for. Thirteenth. At five thirty. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion pass.
That's out. At the site, or no, not at the site, it's here.
Here.
It's above.
Yeah, yes, it's here. Next item is I'll consider uh, scheduling a special city council meeting for October twenty-seventh. At five thirty, here. Is that? Motion by Jessica, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? Audra, on both of these, I actually on all three of them, can you make sure that Michelle was aware of these special meetings that were scheduled? Thank you. Is there any more discussion? All, seeing if I by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Adam.
Mayor, council, thank you for that. I have no additional updates this evening.
Audra.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no updates.
Dave.
No updates, thank you, Mayor.
Dan.
Mayor, thank you. No further updates.
Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just some updates on projects that are going on throughout town again. Um, trails, the Kasab forty-two, that's gonna be paved this week and then shouldering and seating to uh, be shortly after that. Eightieth Street, the trail there, they're gonna be grading starting this week. It's probably gonna take about three weeks to complete that project. Um, Odine Avenue Water Main, we're still waiting on that. Pressure reducing bolt, which is supposed to get here now, October thirteenth. Uh, the four weeks of work to be completed on that, so. That won't be done until uh, first week of November and then. Uh, depending on the weather. Some of the. Um, restoration items will, might go into next year. On, on the county one thirty-seven, which is actually a county project. Um, I did talk to the county today. And Kasan nineteen, which is down to one lane, will be reopened to, uh, both lanes are open. And that's a, I'm in dot project that right now they're painting the beams for the. For the I ninety-four bridge going across there. They added that lane for. Um, collector distributor system. Um, so that's gonna be done by. Wednesday evening, which will reopen nineteen to full capacity.
So, certification, they're closing it just during the day.
Right, they've been closing it from, uh, I believe it's. Eight thirty to four.
It's been open.
Okay.
It hasn't been closed. I ca- I talked to Sarah at the county and complained because of thirty-seven and MacGyver. Closed, so I called and she dealt with Mid dot and it's been open ever since.
Okay.
So it's been free flowing.
Good, good. There's been a lot of complaints about that.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Saw they got.
Else, Ron?
Uh, that's everything unless you have some questions on it.
No, I saw, uh, the fire station got the parking lot tarred. That uh, looks good. Yep.
Alright.
Thanks, Ron.
Yep, thank you.
Sergeant Altman's in the back, Wright County sheriffs.
Long meeting for him.
Patiently waiting.
Uh, piggybacking a little bit off of some of the traffic issues with uh, some of the road closures, so um. I'll, I'll list off some of the stakeholders, I guess, I've spoken, so obviously I spoke with you, Mayor. I spoke with the mayor. So, uh, Jillian Hendrickson, I ended up speaking with. Um, I ended up just driving through some of the neighborhoods, um, you know, the Marlowe's, the sixty-third, uh, that general vicinity. Kind of having some conversations with the residents that are living over there. Uh, combination of a couple different things, it just be. You know, the, having to take the detours, one of the biggest pieces. Uh. Last city council meeting, people start kind of creating their own detours, uh, different locations. Uh, so some of the residents, I spoke of uh, one or two homeowners association presidents over there about. Unofficial detours and people are speeding through the neighborhoods. Uh, I think as far as a solution for that goes, I'm gonna have to try to work with Kevin on uh. Streets department maybe on some temporary signage or maybe just some stop signs. Uh, those are the neighborhoods that typically don't have any stops. Just simply maybe a couple temporary stop signs or something in some of them. Um, try to keep people honest because quite frankly, there isn't. Speed necessarily as far as the speed limit goes, it's gonna have to come off of that visual of, you know, do we need a car that's going twenty-five miles an hour? Directly through two cars that are parked on both sides. Yeah, bucks. So that's more of the issue that we're running into, so I'm not gonna be able to get anybody for like a speeding ticket necessarily. Um, so we're working on that side of it. I was specifically going to. Um, a handful of maybe lower priority calls over the weekend, uh, maybe some just kind of medicals in that general vicinity. There was a handful of like. That were going off, um, just kind of working with uh. The fire departments and working with the ambulance services, making sure they're, they're able to get through. Uh, seems to be okay for the time being, uh. Obviously, when I, you know, as things change, you know, one day it's, you know, closed over here, then it's closed over there, so, so to speak, so. Um, I reached out with the EMS senior director for Alina, for the Wright County region, uh, Brian Nord, and made sure to let him know of what's going on on that end. As well as to reach out to me if any of his crews are having any major issues. Again, spoke with uh, uh, some of the fire movement. They have access to get through to that point and uh, so far they're doing good. Uh. They kind of just trucked and said, yeah, we were able to get through kind of using the detour, which is sixty-third street right now, which is the dirt road that takes the Elverville Public Works building they're able to get through right now, so. Um, just kind of slowly problem solving on, kind of as you mentioned, Tina, there's kind of real road closure here, you know, that's different every day, so. Um, just kind of working on that and try to treat it as it comes and make sure we're not having any major issues, but like I said, still trying to get. Some of those speeds lowered down and trying to keep people honest when they're going through and it's frustrating to have to go all the way around through the neighborhoods, so.
And, and for our conversation Friday, when. I, I think it was a surprise that the roads on both lanes on nineteen where one was closed, so. It, it was like nobody seemed to have communicated that properly and then I called. And I'm like, did you know this was happening? So it was. Uh, your comment was just like, that's a Min, Mid dot thing, but I'm like, but that's our. That's our route, like we're, we're telling people to go out to thirty-eight to go down nineteen and so. Yeah, it was from both roundabouts all the way to past seventieth one morning. When I was at the gym, I saw the, the traffic and so that's when I decided to call. Cause I'm like, you can't have this when we have all these roads closed. People are trying to get to places to work.
Bridge to like seventieth, right?
What's that?
The I ninety-four bridge to seventieth.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
It's not dissimilar than if. On occasion, we get the uh, the trains that do come through uh, up to the facilities uh, on the west side of town, southwest part of town and a complete. You know, it. It's a surprise that a lot of times all of us that are in uh, emergency services realm, uh, we kind of have the problems all in the moment.
Cause it shuts off all access coming north.
Shuts off north or I'm trying to get south or whatever the case is, so. Um, as far as the sheriff's office go, just how everything's centered, you know, the Adsego cars can get into that part of Adsego without any issue or the Elverville cars haven't been issued. We've literally been playing it by ear if there's an issue or we can get a car, you know, sooner than we just make the call on the air and it works out for us anyways. Sheriff's office has actually been a really easy transition, so. Uh, stopped by the Emma's Express, little guys are bored and they have nothing to do and I feel bad. It's my favorite gas station in there. I don't have business right now because typically they get all the traffic on sixty. Right.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. And thank you for the update. Does anyone have anything for? This, this evening? Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Alright. Anyone else has anything? Then a motion to adjourn with the order.
Some of. So.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sign. The meeting is ended. Thank you all for attending.